First of all, council members, please take your places. Thank you. First of all, we'd like to apologize to the public for being late. There was a committee meeting earlier that took a little bit longer, so that's why we're But can the clerk, we'd like to call the order, the Omni Common Council meeting Monday, June 18, 2018. Mr. Flynn? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Nane, Mr. Plares.
Here.
Mr. Ballerin.
Here.
Mr. Conti. Ms. O'Shea.
Here.
Ms. Fahy. Ms. Ferrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien. Here. Mr. Robinson. Fifteen present.
Thank you. Can we please stand, join me for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence? Now, when we proceed to the next item is our public comment period. Each person has up to five minutes to speak about anything he or she wishes. Please do not direct the council members directly because our council members cannot answer or respond to your public comment. They can choose to do so at a later date in the agenda, but you do have five minutes to speak upon any subject that you wish. So hearing that, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Marlon Anderson, resident of 214 Lark Street in Center Square neighborhood of City of Albany, community advocate. I am here in my title as community advocate in the City of Albany. I was requested by a member of the community to advocate their concerns, so I'm here in their stead representing them. There is a new business in the Center Square neighborhood, African-American business at 216 Lark Street. It is a restaurant that provides soul food. It's a thriving restaurant that has a thriving clientele of support, but there is concern that has been raised to me by the owners of the shop concerning the ongoing issues they're having, their customers are having, and they are having with the Albany Parking Authority. And I would say while they are in complete agreement of any legal issues that may be had, there is one issue with the, shall we say, over-aggressive enforcement that is taking place by the Albany Parking Authority upon their customers there. They have, their representatives who are enforcing the parking initiatives are being over-aggressive, verbally abusive, and antagonizing to the customers that are coming into this shop, not to mention making it difficult for them to conduct business there as a whole. It would not be a major issue were they not the only African-American restaurant in the Center Square area. And basically, it needs to be addressed to a fact that while you have aggressive panhandlers who are making anyone who resides in that neighborhood's life a nightmare with their daily accosting about handouts and loitering and public drunkenness and other things that are detrimental to the public health and welfare, they are allowed to progress along without no interference, no anything, but people who are coming to support a legitimate business are being essentially harassed by the Albany Parking Authority as they try to come there. And I don't feel that that's right, and I don't feel they should have to suffer that. I understand that there's laws, there's issues, there are traffic issues, but there's a difference between enforcing the law and being over-aggressive to the point of nearly harassing a business that is basically just standing up on its feet. And I am calling upon the members, Mr. Conti, who represents that district, yourself, Mr. Prin- Mr. Com- Common Council President, who is president of the Albany Black Chamber of Commerce, to come and speak to these individuals about their concerns. They have requested me to speak, and I decided to come down. So again, Mr. Conti, Mr. President, I think you need to speak to these individuals about their concerns, and someone needs to speak to the Albany Parking Authority about their over-aggressive enforcement of traffic laws in front of this business because it is an antagonizing situation, and it's only a matter of time before something wrong is said and something happens, and it is going to be purely the Parking Authority's fault because they are axing for what they are going to get. So again, I really would like for Representative Conti and, if possible, the President of the Council to speak to these individuals about their concerns because they are burgeoning business in the area, and I don't feel that they need to be going through what they're going through at this time, and neither do they. So I have come in their stead, I am here, I have put their voice out to the floor. I hope you hear them through me and step to them and address their concerns. And secondly, as another request from a certain member of the council.
One minute left, sir.
Time's up?
One minute.
Okay. Well, basically, another member has requested my presence as well, so I have came in their stead to address the issue of the billing of the protesters. As anybody, any lawyer worth their salt knows, that is a constitutional issue. You cannot essentially impede the execution of your constitutional rights. The government cannot impede the execution of your constitutional rights. That's a no-win situation, and that should in no way be supported. It's a constitutional issue, and it can't be supported. It's an imposition on the constitutional rights of the individual, and the government cannot do that. It's a constitutional fact, so I don't even think that should be entertained. So I have done my duty for this evening. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Mr. President, Common Council leaders and other members of the Common Council, my message to you tonight falls under the headline, "This is what you need to know." I want to publicly express my disappointment, chagrin, and frustration towards the effort of lack thereof made by the so-called stakeholders associated with the PEG Access Oversight Board to advance the work of community media in Albany. What does it mean to be a stakeholder on the Oversight Board? Being a stakeholder means that the particular member would bring to the table something that would benefit Moving Channel Albany Forward and strive to be a great community media outlet. For example, the studio is housed in the lower level of the Albany Public Library's Washington Avenue branch. We were given the space free of charge and as a service to the community. I offer kudos to the Albany Public Library Board for allowing this to happen. Aside from that, the remaining stakeholders, the Albany City School District, Albany Community Development Agency, College of St. Rose, and the New School Center for Media have not been productive members on the board. Let's take this one case at a time. The City School District representative did not faithfully execute his duties several years ago when the wrong equipment was purchased and to make sure the school district had the proper equipment. The equipment was never accounted for and is missing in action. He also did not produce an internship or mentoring program connecting the TV studio with the media arts program at a Brooklyn, and he has not seen fit to video-record the school board meetings so the proceedings can be shown on public access. What a miserable failure it has been having the school district as a stakeholder. On top of this, the person assigned as the stakeholder sat idly by, or as I would say, sat there as a lump, at last Monday's PEG board meeting when the new studio coordinator asked for the mailbox key. I personally returned the key to this liaison in December and luckily had written confirmation of the handoff. Once I successfully defended myself, he admitted he had the key and produced it the next day. Next on the list, the New School. While aside from helping the channel get started seven years ago, not much else has been accomplished. In fact, the representative says she won't assign a student intern to help the studio coordinator because we don't meet their standards. Well, what a commentary that is. And then she does nothing to improve the relationship over these years. The Channel Albany server is located at the New School. It is dusty, which is a death knell for any such equipment. The server keeps crapping out, cutting into programming for many days, and limiting our effectiveness as a public access channel. Cutting ties with the colony-based profit-making New School would not hamper our progress as a community media channel one bit. College of St. Rose at least tries to do something with camera training courses. It's not perfect, but we bought equipment for them and they use it for the intended purpose. Could a stronger bond be developed with U Albany's media center? Probably. Albany Community Development Agency has an appointee who once touted a conflict of interest existed because the agency provides the funding for the studio coordinator. Instead of showing up and abstaining from votes so a quorum could be present, he chose to be derelict in his duties as a stakeholder. Since the Common Council altered the funding stream from ACTA so the funds can be directly placed in our line item in the city budget, his presence is really no longer needed, and he should resign from the board instead of not attending. He's dead wood and holding back progress on the board. I want to emphasize the ACTA representative is not needed but should be booted. One major problem the board has had over the past years was gaining a quorum in order to properly conduct business. Removing the four of the five stakeholders would bring the board down to seven members, and a quorum would be easier to muster. The stakeholders are busier than the proverbial one-on-paper hanger, and they're busy with their paying jobs and personal lives, and.
One minute remaining.
They need to be removed. It is evident by their actions over the past several years, these five stakeholders really do not want to be involved with community media television. Last Monday, I asked the mayor and Common Council appointees to take stock of these serious matters and support reconstituting the board accordingly. The Common Council should amend the enacting legislation. If after seven years, the PEG operations cannot stand on its own without stakeholders to show the way, then we have bigger problems than you all here realize. I'm Mark Ronich, and this is what you need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the next speaker? Clerk call the next speaker?
Hi, can you hear me okay? Hi, can you hear me okay? Thank you. I'm here to speak about the language in ordinance 326218R, but before I do so that I don't make any foolish assertions, I, if it's okay, I have a question about some, about some simple wording. In the amended text is a term that is household living, as it refers to methadone dispensaries. And I was wondering what is meant by household living? Does that mean a residential neighborhood?
Ma'am, as I said earlier, if you might have not been here, council members cannot respond to questions at this time. It's just for you to say what you like to say, and if they want to respond later on in the agenda in the future meeting, then they can. So this is just for you to say what you have to say, and they can address that later if they choose to.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
I will, and I apologize if I'm misinterpreting household living use. So again, I'm here to speak about this ordinance 326218R as it relates to amending section 375.3, item 5, now to be item E, and I think another item further down. The issue I have with the language is that it doesn't include the thousand-foot rule for residential neighborhoods, or doesn't appear to, although I would prefer the distance be much more stringent. I feel it's important to protect our neighborhoods and the type of consumers these marijuana and methadone dispensaries will attract can pose inconsequential but substantial risks. Consider these populations being on the same buses that children are on coming and going from school. Consider the potential impacts to the children as these consumers walk home, as they walk home from school or are playing in our streets and experiencing these consumers' presence or interacting with them. Now, as far as marijuana goes, it's hard enough to keep kids off drugs, and it's not recreational in New York State yet, and I feel that that might be addressed as far as where it can be purchased further down the line, but for now, I would like to see these dispensaries kept separate from the public way as much as possible, limiting them to industrial areas, off the beaten path, away from shopping centers, away from residential neighborhoods, and at a minimum, the 1,000-foot rule should apply to residential neighborhoods as it does, and I mean in both cases, as it does to the educational and religious institutions. Most of the consumers accessing either of these facilities, methadone dispensaries or marijuana dispensaries, many of them are eligible for medical transport and use those services. So getting, getting these established in a more remote location, I don't feel would severely impact access to them for the people who need them. So many of the consumers could result in creating or drawing higher crime to our neighborhoods as they pass through them to get to these dispensaries. Many, as I sympathize with people, especially who are trying to recover from opioid addiction, some of them do have criminal histories that might not be the best for them to be in just walking through random neighborhoods to get where they're going. So I hope you, the council adds the at minimum 1,000-foot.
You have one minute left, ma'am.
To the amendments proposed regarding these dispensaries. Thank you. And also, while I'm here, I'm sure that most of the Common Council members are aware that the Planning Board is discussing language allowing a plasma collection center, and I feel that their 250-foot rule is not stringent enough and that they shouldn't be, again, in anywhere near neighborhoods or residential areas or anywhere near, for instance, the Red Cross, who they'd be in direct competition with, and I think that they should be more regulated than the 250-foot straight-line rule that the Planning Board is talking about allowing for in their zoning regulations for this pay-for-blood business. I don't believe the people that this business will attract, and I was at a meeting where they appeared and requested their variants, when language be developed to allow for them, where they indicated that 200 people would frequent their establishment daily.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Only 60 would be accepted. That's a lot of unacceptable people.
Ma'am, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. In case you didn't see my email that had the clerk and the justice state of aid forward, I am in support of waiving the civil service fee and in support of waiving the Poor People's Campaign fine. I penned the following days after the shooting at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando two years ago. To all my Republican representatives and senators, when you allow.
Alana.
Okay, sorry.
Mike, thanks.
I penned the following days after the shooting at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando two years ago. To all my Republican senators and representatives, when you allow suspected terrorists who are on no-fly lists to buy high-powered weaponry with no questions asked, when you respond to the largest shooting in modern-day U.S. history by saying it was Orlando's turn, when you start fearing and war-mongering based on the shooter's religion and skin color and not on a shred of evidence tying the attack to terrorism, when you refuse to admit that this was an attack targeting the LGBTQ community, when you can't even bring yourself to offer condolences because it was an attack on the LGBTQ community, when you ignore a thwarted potential attack on pride in L.A. because the would-be shooter was white, when you follow a moment of silence with immediately refusing to even consider voting on gun legislation, when two days later you decline to vote on legislation that would prohibit discrimination in employment based on sexual orientation and gender identity, when you cumulatively have attempted to pass 200-some-odd laws that discriminate against the LGBTQ community in the first half of the year, when you try to legalize a paramedic's right to willingly refuse life-saving CPR to someone based on actual or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity, then I must let you know, I call BS on your quote, "prayers for the victims and families." That being said, no one tells me who to be afraid of. No one tells us to be, who to be afraid of, not before Orlando, not after Orlando. I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, I am not afraid of Islam. I'm not afraid of black or brown people. You know who I'm afraid of? White men. If you think that's racist, I will not apologize. In particular, there are people in Washington, white Christian men, some of whom I assume are good people. A few are very fine people, but they're the ones attacking our community. You don't get to say, based on a reactionary response by someone who appears to be Islamic, that it was terrorism. I have a quote that I had a couple of years back. When a, when a crime is committed by a black person, it's gang violence. When a crime is committed by a Hispanic person, it's drug violence. When a crime is committed by an Arabic person, it's Islamic terror. When a crime is committed by a white person, it's, "He was a wonderful neighbor." What happened? Thank you for your time. Boycott the NRA, Black Lives Matter. Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here probably for a reason that none of you have heard about, and I call it civil injustice. My brother died on March 13th of this year. His funeral was on the 24th, he had been cremated, and the luncheon was at Grappa's 72 Restaurant at 1818 Central Avenue. It used to be Carmine's. The bartender there, Brian Canastrari, asked me if I could post my, if he could post my brother's pictures on a poster board so that people who knew my brother, who went, he went there on Saturday nights, could see the pictures. I said yes. The luncheon was there. After the luncheon, I went to take the pictures, and Brian said, "Oh, leave them so the people who knew him at night can come in and see them." I hesitated, and Brian said, "No, I'll make sure you get them. I'll guard them with my life." From that day on, Brian has refused to return those pictures to me. I went to the police, excuse me, they said it's not a criminal act, there's nothing they can do. I went to the mayor's office, I went to the governor's office, the district attorney, they tell me there's nothing they can do. So I guarantee you, if no one can help me, I'm taking matters in my own hands, and you'll see my name in the paper.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening, council and president. I've never spoken at a city council meeting, and I'm not a professional protester or activist or organizer, but I wanted to speak to why I've been part of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for a moral revival over the last six weeks. I have been, 10 years in New York, and 10 years of those years have been living in a single-room occupancy room, six feet by 11 feet, with no kitchen. I work as a gardener, freelance gardener. My rate has gone actually down since 2007. I've recently moved to Troy, and since I've been here, I've been able to participate in the Poor People's Campaign actions every week, which has been nothing short of amazing. And I just wanted to speak to why I've been doing that. Outside of myself, my grandfather was moved, he was a quarry worker, and after routine surgery, he was moved from his hospital room to a skilled nursing facility by his insurance company, and he died because the insurance company didn't want to pay the rate of him staying in the hospital. So this insurance company killed my grandfather. My friend Michael, who is an ex of mine, has progressed HIV and AIDS, even receiving public assistance. He had to move, he had to move from Los Angeles because he couldn't afford any rent there where he could have a private toilet. I wanted to talk about my neighbors in North Troy, a Puerto Rican family, living in a house that's crumbling. They collect scrap metal to make a living. There's no grocery stores anywhere nearby. They can't grow food on their land because the land is poisoned with lead and with other And I've been part of the Poor People's Campaign for all these people, for everyone else, for my neighbors, for my community, and I would urge people to try to understand that the issues that the Poor People's Campaign is dealing with, the issues of systemic racism, poverty, ecological devastation, and militarism, are issues that are, if we don't look at them, if we don't deal with these evils, they will move into our private door. These are public issues, and if we do not confront them, they will, they will come to you, if not you directly, someone you love or your neighbor. I'm happy to be part of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival as just a citizen. This is my first time doing any sort of activism like this, and I want to say how important it's been for me to be part of a movement that considers a future where we can live and not suffer.
Thank you. What's your address, sir? Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker?
My name is Nancy Benedict. I live at 31 Forest Road, Delmar. I'm representing Citizens for Public Transportation, which I am the chairperson of. We started a campaign back in November for clean, safe, and accessible bus stops, which we are still working on. In winter, the inaccessible bus stops are a terrible problem for everybody, especially people in wheelchairs or people who have trouble walking. Part of the problem is so many different entities are responsible for keeping different areas shoveled out. CDTA is responsible for the bus stops. The homeowner or business owner is responsible for the side. The homeowner or business owner is responsible for the sidewalk. Nobody is legally responsible for the area between the sidewalk and the curb. And then in the curb, or then when you step off of the curb, the city, town, or village is responsible, if it's a city, town, or village street, if it's a county, if it's a county route number, the county is responsible. If it's a state route, the state is responsible. If it's a federal route number, the federal government is responsible. And everybody just wants to pass the buck to somebody else. When we had a meeting where we had some representatives from different agencies, everybody just wanted to pass the buck to somebody else. CDTAs does a pretty good job of keeping the bus shelters shoveled. The homeowners and business owners don't do such a good job. And I know you did pass a new ordinance last November, December, which increased the fine for not shoveling your sidewalk. And it also, well, it also meant you didn't get 24 hours after you got a warning. Anytime 24 hours after the end of a snowstorm, people were legally responsible to have their sidewalk shoveled and they didn't get a warning. Now, I spoke in favor of that ordinance. I think it was a good thing, but you didn't do a thing about the area between the sidewalk and the curb and that's a problem. And that's where the really heavy snow is because the plow just comes through and leaves a really heavy, a bank of heavy snow. There are some problems even in the summer with the bus stops, especially for people who are in wheelchairs or something. One of the problems is that a lot of the bus stops are just a sign on a pole, basically, in a grassy area and you cannot get a wheelchair over grass. If the area between the curb and the sidewalk is grass, how are you supposed to get a wheelchair over that? And in many places, the curb cuts are in the wrong place. And this could result in a person in a wheelchair getting killed by a car because of that. There's also a problem both in summer and winter of cars parking in bus stops. And we talked to a police officer about this and he said that they do not write tickets unless there's actually a sign that tells people not to park, either between two signs or between a sign and a corner because of the bus stop. They will not write tickets. And this is ridiculous because they could make enough money on the fines to pay more fines. Thank you.
Mr. Conti, we've exceeded our 30-minute time limit for public comment. We have four more speakers. Is there a second? All those in favor? Public comment extended. Could you call the next speaker, please?
Dennis Karius.
I'm Dennis Karius and I want to thank everybody for extending the time limit here. Great. I want to also second the motion we just heard from Nancy Benedict, the clean, safe, and accessible bus stops between the sidewalk and the curb. There are so many baby boomers out there now. They were born after World War II in the late '40s and early '50s and now they're over 60, 70 years old. And to say homeowners are responsible for getting all that snow out or whatever's out there, if that woman, God forbid, her husband passed away and she's, you know, over 60, 70, 80 years old and she's the only one living there, she's responsible to get those bus stops cleared out. And that, it doesn't make sense when you've got the CDTAs and you've got, you know, the city or the state or whatever to do that work. So I just want to second the motion. And also, I want to really appreciate the remarks we heard before from Mark Gronage for his important topic. I want to, I second the motion. Mark was the vice chair of the PEG Access Oversight Board and was doing such a great job, it seemed like that's why he was removed from the PEG AOB, for that reason alone. So we really do want to ask things to go in a good direction. Thank you.
Mr. Karius, can you state your address, please? For the record, thank you.
Dennis Karius. 13 York Road, Albany, New York, 12203.
Thank you. And could future speakers just state your address when you come to the table for public comment? Thank you. Clerk, call the next speaker?
Emily McNeil.
Good evening. My address, I live in Rotterdam. It's 994 Burdex Street. So I'm not a resident of the city of Albany, but I am here this evening to also add a few words about the Poor People's Campaign and National Call for Moral Revival, which has been holding actions over the last six weeks in state capitals around the country. Obviously Albany is the state capital of this state and so serves a special role in a sense in the state as a place where people congregate to lift up our concerns and our hopes for the future of this state. So earlier this afternoon, we had about over 200 folks from around the state who were gathered up the street in the Capitol. This was the sixth Monday in a row that we had a couple hundred people. And for those of you who may have made it down, you would have seen folks from really every part of the state, from Western New York, the Southern Tier, New York City, the Capitol Region, coming together, not just for one day, but for six weeks in a row, to both, of course, lift up what we're concerned about in the state, but also to take action together, to sing together, to share stories together, and to begin to build relationships that are going to move us forward in the kind of organizing and advocacy work that we want to do. The reason that we have been gathering in state capitals and being disruptive, that is true, is because the country and the state and the city are facing a crisis. In New York State, there are 3 million people that live below the federal poverty line. And that line, as many of you know, for a family of four, if you make $24,500, you are not poor by those standards. So 3 million people in New York State are by those standards. If we look at it more broadly, 44% of households in the state, according to the United Way, don't earn enough to meet the basic costs of living. In the Capitol Region, it's about 40%. So we're approaching half of families in our community can't make ends meet. This isn't an aberration. It's not folks down on their luck. It's not people making bad decisions. When we're talking about almost half of our community, there's a structural problem happening. And we've seen over the past, really over my lifetime, I'm 31, things getting worse, inequality growing. Child poverty upstate is growing. It's at just really unacceptable levels. When we look at militarism, which is another thing this campaign talks about, the billions of dollars that are spent on wars that just cause destruction. I think there is reporting when we most recently bombed Syria about the profits that immediately went to a few contractors that spent taxpayer money and put it into the coffers of these contractors and all it did was destroy, destroy things. These are crises that are happening before our eyes and the Poor People's Campaign is an effort to turn the tide. We don't think it's going to happen through kind of the usual channels, that something, a real groundswell of people coming together is what's necessary. And it's about bringing people together from across the state,
One minute left.
From different regions. It's about bringing people together across issues. So we had, you know, some of your anti-war protesters who've been doing this for a long time and then people like Kevin, who you heard about, who've never protested before. One of our leaders is a single mom in the Southern Tier in Cuba, New York, in Allegheny County, who runs a food pantry. Folks who haven't worked together before are working together. And I, as a resident of the Capitol Region, feel really grateful to be living here and have been in the epicenter of where folks have been gathering for the last six weeks. And I just want to invite folks to learn more about the campaign and the messaging and the people who are involved because this is just the first phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Looks like Joseph Paparon. Good evening. My name is Joe Paparon. I live at 835 Washington Avenue here in Albany. I am an organizer and a member of the Poor People's Campaign and National Call for Moral Revival. And as my comrade was just explaining, this is a national campaign that for six weeks now has held nonviolent, direct actions in over three dozen states in Washington, D.C. And what she just described is happening all over the country. People who have never worked together before, people from all different walks of life, people who have suffered under various issues are coming together and working together in new ways. 50 years ago, the Poor People's Campaign was Martin Luther King Jr.'s final campaign. And he came to the conclusion that a Poor People's Campaign was what was necessary emerging from the Civil Rights Movement. All right? He'd come to recognize that fighting for racial justice and civil rights had encountered some limits. And he would say things like, "What good is it to be able to sit at a lunch counter if you can't afford a sandwich?" Right? Or he would say things like, "I'd come to believe that we were integrating into a burning house." And so he identified the interconnected nature of three major crises of his time, which was racism, poverty, and militarism. This is at the height of the Vietnam War. And the thing is, the crises that he identified are, by nearly every objective measure, worse today than they were 50 years ago. We have more people in this country living below the poverty line, the horribly inadequate poverty line. We spend more money on our military and on things like immigration, deportation, and detention. Nowhere in this country is the minimum wage a living wage. King was confronting a housing crisis and called for the ending of the slums and a massive investment in new housing for the poor. And everywhere in this country, including in Albany, New York, there is more vacant properties and vacant housing than there are homeless people. And then additionally, something that wasn't quite on King's radar is the environmental crises that threatens all life on the planet. We also can look to history a little bit to know the kinds of things that are necessary to change these crises. And the reality is, again, it's been 50 years, all right? It doesn't matter who's in the White House. It doesn't matter who's controlled the Senate and the House of Representatives or the governor's office or the state senate or the assembly or the mayor's office here or the common council. It doesn't matter what party they're from or what their name is. There is no legislative solution to these crises. And every single movement for justice in history, every single one, labor rights, civil rights, women's rights, LGBT, all started with direct action. They were condemned. They were criticized by the people who didn't want their lives disrupted. But the truth is, the status quo cannot continue, all right? And the entirety of life on the planet is threatened by this. And as we've heard from others already, people are struggling and living under these oppressions and there is no relief in sight from any elected official. And I say this not to criticize you all. I know you all care about our city and you care about our state, right? You care about the right things. But to recognize the depth of these crises, that there is no path out of this in the current structures that are available to us, you have to understand, this is why people would resort to direct action. And so the question I guess I want to leave you all with is this, is how bad do the numbers have to get? How many people need to be living in poverty and stuck in these oppressions? How many more people do we need to lock up, either in our mass incarceration system or the immigrant detention system, right? How much more money do we need to spend killing poor people of color overseas, before it would be justified for people to step into the street and disrupt business as usual and interrupt the status quo? So that's the question I leave you all with. And lastly, I just want to share one brief story of how this is very visceral to me here in Albany. When Dante Ivy was murdered, his family, who depended on his income, ended up being evicted from their house and they ended up in a shelter. And to my knowledge, the police officers who murdered him have not missed a paycheck and remain on the force. Justice for Dante Ivy. Fire those cops.
Clerk, please call the next speaker, please.
June, looks like Ragnacci.
My name is June Ragnacci. I live in 165 Daniels Road, Saratoga Springs, New York. I am here tonight to represent the need for the Poor People's Campaign. I have been a resident of New York State the majority of my life. And I am telling you, this is near to my heart. I have been a nurse, a licensed practical nurse, for 21 years. I have practiced the majority of my life in New York State. I have seen what poverty has done to the elderly, to the young, to the working-class mothers and fathers who cannot afford to pay for their medication for their children or for themselves. I have seen death because of poverty. This cannot stand. I am asking you for solutions. I am asking you not to condemn people who bring these problems to your door. If you brush aside these problems, what kind of people are you? I am here at the capital of New York State. I am begging you to heed our words because this will not stand. It will not fly anymore. And you have seen us on the streets, you will see us on the news, you will see us in the Capitol. What are you going to do about that? My mother is 75 years old. She used to live at The Oaks and Fort Edward, which was senior housing. I was a nurse at Fort Edward Nursing Home, which is directly next door. I would go over and check on my mother. Open the cabinets. And you know what I would see? Nothing. Mom, where's your food? I had to pay for my medicine. No, this ain't right. Do you guys agree? I'm here for my mother. I'm here for my patients. I'm here for my three children I have raised. Stand with us. Don't stand against us. Ecological damage, Fort Edward. I would cross that bridge every day and see the dredging. You know what? That Hudson River flows downward. I go to Moreau State Park this weekend. You know what I see? 72 acres of our state land for sale. What the hell is that shit? Excuse my French. What are we going to give to our children if these lands are being ravished and destroyed? What kind of society are we going to be? Not one that I care for. Militarism. Many of my cousins, I have an uncle who's an admiral in the Navy, have served proudly for the United States of America. And our President of the United States demands that we sit to attention just like the people of North Korea. What kind of country is this? No, it will not stand. Racism. Each and every one of you here tonight knows somebody or have felt the effects of racism. I have seen it. I saw it at the celebration in Albany on the streets this weekend at June 15th. Excuse me, I'm rolling over my words. Why was there so much of a police presence at this celebration? This historic celebration? I go to the streets of Saratoga Festivals, I see one or two cops. This is not right. I'm asking you why.
One minute remaining.
I'm asking for solutions. I'm asking for you to sit down with the Poor People's Campaign, sit down with us, sit down with your voters, sit down with your daughters, your brothers, your sisters, your mothers, your fathers, and you say, "What can we do to make this society better?" Because we need to do better. And if you don't, poverty equates death. I have seen it over and over again as a nurse. You can't afford your medicine, you can't afford food, you're going to have a short life, like my father, who died at the age of 66. He worked so hard his whole life, and he died. This is why I'm here. Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker? Vincent Ragusa. This will be the last speaker for the evening. Okay, Mr. Ragusa, your number 16, so have at it.
Vincent Ragusa, I go with 13 Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. There's got a problem up in the 15th Ward, first with yard waste. Right now, there's 30 bags up on Cottage Avenue. I called today to have them picked up, the guy says, "You can't pick them up to Thursday." I said, "Well, what Thursday are you referring to?" "My yard waste sits out there now for two to three weeks. How long is this stuff going to sit out there that's up on Cottage?" And they can't answer me. Or they'll say to me, "Well, what streets didn't get picked up? The whole 15th Ward, we're missing." They just, the yard waste is not being picked up on time. I was hoping that Sergio Penuncio would be here so we could discuss this a little farther. Oh, yes. Oh, okay. I'm glad, I didn't know what Sergio looks like. So Sergio, we have a problem with the pickup on yard waste. I do want to tell you that. Sometimes it sits out in the 15th Ward two to three weeks. And that's, and by that time, it stinks. The fermentation is just terrible. The other thing I want to talk about are the streets. They're absolutely terrible. Beach, Wellington, Fountain, Taff. And it's not due to wear and tear, it's the contractors come in, they work on the streets, they go away, and there's no accountability. They never put them back in the condition that they find. How would you, last year, we paved Tudor Road. No sooner did the vehicles leave Tudor Road, who come in? Niagara Mohawk. They put a new Niagara Mohawk line down there, all along the end. What do you, and if you go down there, you can see where it wasn't put back together, right? On my street, when you come down there, there's a dip so, so big down there that when you hit it, you fly up in the air and you come down, and I have two more like that. And how did they get there? Well, the water department broke them up, fixed, or fixed the leak, did a fabulous job. I have no complaints there. But now the street is sunken in. Not one place, but two other places. Fountain Avenue, the exact same thing with Fountain. Wellington Avenue, again. There is no accountability. A plumber can come in, tear half the street up, put a new sewer line, put a new water line, whatever, never puts it back in the condition that they find it in. So where is accountability? How do we get accountability that anybody that does work on our street, that somebody from the city goes out and first, they should be able, they should have to get a permit. I don't care whether it's Niagara Mohawk, Verizon, Spectrum, whatever. They should get, if they're going to work and they're going to be doing some tearing up on our streets, they should get a permit, and they should, we should have somebody from the city, I don't care what it is, go out and make sure that they are put back in the condition that they're found. My councilperson got two streets, Kent Terrace and Oxford. Kent Terrace is as big as me, too, to the Corielleus up there. The streets are just implorable. Really, truthfully, guys, we have to, there has to be a better system than what we're doing to put our streets back together. I can't be the only one complaining out of the lodge. Everyone here must be in the same boat I'm here. So I don't have the solution. I really, truthfully do. Picking up yard waste, that's an easy solution. Fixing the streets, getting accountability from contractors that come out and do it, that's another thing. I can't do that. And with all the water main breaks that were done in the city of Albany this year, and we had a tough, tough, tough winter, who accounts to make sure that they put the streets back that the Department of General Services gave them? Nobody. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no other speakers at this time signed up, so I will call public comment period at this time close. Now moving on to approval of minutes from previous meetings, Mr. Conti. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of minutes passed. Moving on to local laws. Mr. Conti. Can a clerk please read the local law, please?
A local law amending Part 1 of Article 1 and Part 2 of Article 8 of Chapter 42 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to quarterly staffing and overtime reports.
Mr. Conti. Thank you. Moving on, any reports of standing committees? Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning, Economic Development, and Land Use Committee met earlier today and considered Resolution 3118R and Resolution 325218R and passed both resolutions out with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Igo.
The Law, Buildings, and Codes Committee met last Thursday to continue our conversation on ordinance 305118 pertaining to the vacant building registry. We will be meeting next Tuesday, the 26th, to continue that again with Mr. McGee. And hopefully, after the vote tonight for Rick LaJoy, he should be back. And that was the other resolution that we did take up, was the appointment of Rick LaJoy as Director of Buildings and Codes, and it was reported out of committee unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
General Services Committee met on June 13th to interview Mr. Sergio Penuncio and to make a, and made a positive recommendation on the resolution appointing him at General Services Commissioner.
Thank you. Ms. Pliers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting on the 27th of this month, immediately following caucus, to take up the pending items on, public safety items on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on June 5th, and it considered Resolution 33.61.18R and reported out with a positive recommendation. This is simply a closeout of the books for 2016 and some transfers that are necessary for the council to approve. We were not over budget for 2016. We also looked at the fourth quarter report for 2017, which is essentially the end-of-the-year report for 2017. And we have about a $500,000 surplus. However, that includes at least one voluntary pilot from the entities that have promised pilots, but there is an issue with these entities reneging on their promises. So we may have no surplus from 2017 when all is said and done, but again, we're not over budget. With regard to, and we also considered, or heard a report from Treasurer Darius Shonafar regarding the first quarter of 2018, and right now, things seem to be on target. However, there continues to be a continuing issue with the private pilots, and we will be continuing to monitor these quarterly reports. We do not have any meetings currently scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Any other reports? Reports, any stand ad hoc committee reports? Seeing none? We'll move on to consideration of ordinances, and we'll go to ordinance introduced. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I introduce ordinance 326218R for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Paragraph B and Paragraph C of Part 3 of Chapter 375 and Part 6 of Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the operation of methadone dispensaries.
Thank you. Mr. Conti. Thank you, Mr. Conti. Moving on to resolutions, considerations of resolutions, resolutions introduced. Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 466218R and request for introduction.
Do you want a roll call vote on that, Mr. Anani?
Which one is it?
This.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 446218R and request passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council in support of the City of Albany waiving the Civil Service exam fees for honorably discharged veterans.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Anani?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to thank the Civil Service Commission for voting unanimously to approve this legislation to waive the Civil Service exam fee for our city veterans. This resolution comes before the Common Council to ask for your support in eliminating a barrier to good-paying civil service job opportunities for our city veterans. We, as a city, should be ready and willing to help the men and women who return home from defending our country to get employed as they return to surveilling life. Let's give them a chance to qualify for good civil service jobs without worrying about where to get the money to pay for it. This resolution will ensure that our veterans, who will be willing to put their lives on the line, will be able to re-enter the workforce and enjoy the same job opportunities that we, as surveillance, take for granted, thanks to their service. Simply put, inability to pay should not be a barrier for our veterans to get a good job. With your support, we can make this a reality in our city. At the same time, hopefully, it is my hope that this legislation sets precedence for future bills to expand civil service opportunities for recent high school graduates and other underserved groups in the City of Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani. Mr. Pliers.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Fahey.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 4518R and ask for its passage.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state marginally program, aid-eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriated funds therefore.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani.
Yes.
Mr. Pliers.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Fahey.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Conti. Do I hear a second? We got a second, Mr. Shea. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 466218R and request for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Albany Common Council in support of the City of Albany waiving fines against the New York State Poor People's Campaign.
Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Reverend Dr. King Jr. planned 50 years ago what was to be one of the largest and boldest movements that the country had ever seen, the Poor People Campaign. The goal was to address the needs of the most vulnerable amongst us in pursuit of economic justice. Unfortunately, Dr. King's untimely death led to premature end to this movement. Now, a new generation of everyday folks, students, working families, activists, have come together and embraced the nonviolent protest method of Dr. King, to put poverty and inequity, which are just as pervasive today as in 1968, at the forefront of our national conversation. The campaign makes use of rights of the poor people, of people granted in the United States Constitution, freedom of speech and freedom of assemble, to focus attention on the many Albany residents and the people across the country who have to deal with poverty every single day. In the words of Albany Times Union, "The city billed poor people and advocates for poor people for complaining about poverty." Instead of working with them, our city has issued fines. As elected officials sworn to uphold the Constitution, we shouldn't sit idle. As the Poor People Campaign is penalized for exercising their right to participate in our political process, voicing their opinion, and to assemble peacefully. Now, as a history teacher, I understand that First Amendment is not absolute, and that public safety must be obtained. The Poor People Campaign engage in direct action to interrupt the status quo in Albany in order to make change and to demonstrate have been civil, and they have been nonviolent, and have not threatened the safety of the public. To issue a fine despite these realities runs counter to the First Amendment. Poverty and inequity remains pervasive issues in our nation, our state, and our city. Rather than penalizing Poor People's Campaign for their approach, the city should be facilitating a dialogue with the campaign to come up with ways to address poverty and inequity, at least, at minimum, at the local level. Fellow council members, I ask for your support of this resolution, which will reaffirm the First Amendment rights of the Poor People Campaign while acknowledging the legitimacy of the issues of poverty and inequity. I ask for your support and recognition of the fact that these demonstrators were trying to follow the footsteps of Dr. King, a man whose actions were considered controversial in our other acts in his time, a man who changed the trajectory of our country. Now, I just want to close by saying this. At the end of the day, the Poor People Campaign will prevail, because they have people power. Now, I know some people want them to step back. They're not going to step back. They're going to fight back, they're going to keep on marching, they're going to keep on agitating, they're going to keep on struggling, I'm going to keep on legislating. They will not rest until we address poverty and also income inequality in the City of Albany, in New York State, and also on the federal level. Thank you.
Mr. Conti. All right, Mr. Conti. Oh, yeah, you already introduced it, sorry. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 476218R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution designating the mayor to act as official representative of the City of Albany to submit annually to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development the annual action plan and amendments thereto under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani.
Yes.
Ms. Pliers.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Fahey.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Howie. Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held. Yeah. Pardon me? Moving on to resolutions held, Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution Nine Thirty-One Eighteen R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council authorizing the execution of a payment in lieu of tax agreement with Albany Executive House Apartments Incorporated.
Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this concerns a pilot for a limited-profit housing company that is eligible by statute for an exemption. Uh, it's commonly called Mitchell Lama Housing Cooperative. It's for low-to-moderate income individuals. Um, it is regulated through the New York State Division for Housing and Community Renewal. Uh, the pilot or payment in lieu of taxes is limited to a maximum of twenty percent of the carrying cost. Um, and the carrying charges, these carrying costs involve repairs, maintenance, insurance fees, um, operation costs, um, and money in their reserve fund, as well as any mortgage payment that's, that they need to pay. This is a change, the council, that council will need to approve this on a yearly basis. And we have been, the amount of the pilot is very similar to what we've paid in past years. This, this housing, uh, the Mitchell Lama Housing Co-op, called the Executive House, has been around for the, over fifty years. And, uh, um, and I ask for its passage. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pliers?
Yes.
Mr. Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Conti. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Albany, authorizing the execution of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement by and between the City of Albany, Robinson Square Housing Development Fund Corporation, Apartment Company Incorporated, and Robinson Square Associates LLC.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pliers?
Yes.
Mr. Baller? Mr. Conti? Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution Thirty-three Point Sixty-One Point Eighteen R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council approving the transfer in amount to exceed four percent of the total city budget for the year two thousand and sixteen to various accounts in accordance with the City Charter, Section Six Zero Four.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pliers?
Yes.
Mr. Baller? Mr. Conti? Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Igo?
President, I notice Resolution Forty-two Sixty-One Eighteen and ask for its passage at this time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of Richard LaJoy as Director of the Department of Buildings and Regulatory Compliance.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pliers?
Yes.
Mr. Baller?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti? Ms. Shea?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. I notice Resolution Forty-three Sixty-One Eighteen R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of Sergio Penunzio as the Commissioner of the Department of General Services.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Pliers?
Yes.
Mr. Baller?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti? Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Penunzio, congratulations. Thank you very much. Moving on to Commissioners of Deeds. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer a list of names for appointment to Commissioner Deeds and waive the reading of the names.
Do I have, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to miscellaneous unfinished business, Mr. Conti. Do we have a second? We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.